All right, um, let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
In the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right, welcome everyone. The weather is a-changing, we all have sweaters on, so. I would like to start off with a little recognition of the passing of Betty Herzog. She's an amazing pillar of this community, working with the kids through PTA and her church for over sixty years, so please keep the Herzog family in your thoughts. Thank you very much. Could I have an adoption of the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. So do you want everyone to know Jackie is out of town, so she is down there with Linda? All right. The superintendent's report?
Thank you President Dome. Instead of me giving comments today, I'm going to turn it over to our administrative team, Dr. Jennifer Kephardt, Kyle Gurrell, and Kelly Waichel to give an update on the board priorities.
And I can tell you now that it's really been a busy quarter. How's that sound? A little bit better. So as we start talking today, we're going to spend a little bit of time through some pictures and information, sharing our focus on universal Tier One instructional development and resources. We're going to talk about the implementation and the beginning of our multi-tiered system of support. We're going to talk about our continued focus and implementation of Equity Plan Phase One, and then talk about our assessment expansion. So as we begin today, and you know because you had the opportunity to spend some time with Mr. Greg Tang as well, but we have had a math focus in the district and truly on that Tier One universal development of our staff. And that started this summer with some very excited teachers, K through eighth grade, spending some time with Greg Tang, and that is continuing throughout the course of the year as well. So we appreciate Dr. Daniel and then Dr. Flack's team came in as well and looked at our alignment of our curriculum and our resources with Greg Tang, and they are now doing Tangy Tuesdays, so you may see some of that on Twitter as well. We are also working with Dr. Flack and his team on aligning some high school courses that you will see over the course of the next few months as well. When we continue our focus on Tier One, the implementation of collaborative classrooms in our elementary schools, and you heard about that in the spring, it is full-fledged implementation time right now. Our teachers are doing a wonderful job in utilizing the various resources, really focusing on phonics and deepening the reading skills of our students, also supporting dyslexia with the addition of SIPs and learning that throughout their trainings as well. So again, Dr. Flack and his team of supports for buildings and resources along with that implementation. As we continue to move forward in our secondary realm, we are focused on the Real World Kaufman Grant as well as secondary program expansion and what that looks like. With our, we are one of fifteen districts with the Kaufman Real World Learning Grant, and we are focused on how to increase market value assets. The goal is by 2030 that every senior in a six-county radius would have one of the market value assets. And those assets are industry-recognized credentials, internship opportunities, entrepreneurial ship opportunities, and college courses, as well as some that we may see along the way. So we have so a wonderful start in Lee Summit, and we are looking at ways to expand and what might that look like in expansion of programming. So more to come with Dr. Andrews and his team in that work. The link on our digital learning environment is to our Twitter hashtag R7C2L, and this is an opportunity to be able to see the various digital learning opportunities that our students are having throughout the engagement in instruction and curriculum. So with Dr. Whaley and his team, we are able to truly see what students in the classroom, if you hop on that hashtag during the day or anytime, you're able to see what they're doing throughout classrooms. With our new devices, we have new devices, as you know, at our secondary level and getting ready to include those at our elementary level in January. So we are adding exploration with those devices of instruction, and as we talk about future-ready environments, we are starting to define what that looks like in the instructional realm as well. Throughout our MTSS implementation with Dr. Mathis and Dr. Hill, we are focused on those Tier One, those Tier One universal instructional strands and leadership development, but that is also deep conversations about students in regards to academics, to behavior, and social-emotional learning for all students. We are continuing, as has been shared with you, and the link that's on here is to the updates of our Equity Plan. As you know, we are continuing our focus with EEC, and on our website, we have all of the feedback that was provided through EEC training, and that is continued. We actually had two of those trainings, day two for our leaders this week, so we are continuing that work. Dr. Barger is meeting with some key leaders and having some focused conversations on what we can continue to move forward and what those supports look like for our buildings and for all students, as well as we will be sharing additional data in November during our November work session and the disaggregation of that data during that time. We are continuing to focus on social-emotional learnings and focusing on belonging through training and VIST, trauma-informed care, and various building activities that support the languages around social-emotional learning, as well as spaces. We have calming spaces in our buildings. We have some family connections where grade levels are connecting with other grade levels and meeting monthly on how to support each other. We have mindful moments throughout our district. We are doing some amazing work in connecting students to their social-emotional learning and growth. And then as we can continue to expand how we utilize data to drive instruction, we are expanding our NWEA supports, and doing that, we are providing training for teachers and administrators on how to utilize the data to drive instruction in our classrooms to see where students are, to see their strengths and their opportunities in which we can help them grow instructionally. So great work in our first quarter. As we continue to move forward in second quarter, we are continuing focus in each of those areas, but also expanding and providing more definition, utilization, and alignment with our instructional compass and our portrait of a graduate. So for now, I will send it over to Mr. Gurrell.
All right, board priority number two. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about the second part of this priority, engaging stakeholders. And so the, to start with, just an update on schedule. We, of course, had a CAC meeting this week and had presentation of survey results, and we'll be continuing that tonight. Through the month of November, will be heavy interaction with CAC in prioritizing and preparing a recommendation that will go to the board at the December board meeting. Just a quick update and a reminder, we've been working with Hollison Miller, DLR Group, and Gould Evans on pre-K and elementary, middle school and high school designs. Then J.E. Dunn and McCown Gordon are two construction managers in those areas. The projects we're working on, early childhood center at Prairie View, Mason Expansion for Capacity, and Future Ready Learning, the other five elementaries we've discussed, new middle school and renovations of the three existing, and the Lee Summit High renovation. We have got core design teams that have met twice on the Mason project. It's been really exciting to talk with staff about the opportunities there. We've had numerous meetings with Lee Summit High Group, and I've also met with our middle school administrators and Dr. Andrews to start visioning what the new middle school could be. So we've conducted a survey district-wide. We surveyed all district administrators and their buildings. They were surveyed about facility needs that dealt with curricular space that they needed, with the adequacy of their current space, and also various infrastructure items that may or not meet their needs. District administration has held twenty-four individual meetings onsite with these administrators to discuss the results, and that data is being reviewed currently and prioritized and will be brought to SLT and IOT. Sorry, that was not a part of my... This isn't the presentation. This is the one from last quarter. Yeah, this is, this is the first quarter presentation. Yeah, this goes on. Okay, let's do this by, by memory. So we, we'll share this with the board visually. We held department meetings with each department group at Lee Summit High School, and it was three days, three to four days of individual meetings where we surveyed them on the data in their departments, the numbers. We talked about program needs, and then of course, opportunities that they would like to see in, in new designs. And so what we really took out of that was that the staff at Lee Summit High School is really excited and ready for new opportunities to provide to kids. And so our design team is taking a lot of information from the teaching groups that they're going to implement and implement into the design. We then put together a group of students that Dr. Harrison did. We had about twenty-five students that got together, and our design group assembled some exercises for them, where they did some visioning for the school around tradition, pride, and excellence, which we know are the core values for the school. And so the kids came up with some, some really fantastic and unbelievably mature thoughts about what the vision of Lee Summit High School could be. And so we created, gosh, I wish I could remember. They, we created some, some Venn diagrams that showed the thoughts that they had and showed the core areas that they thought were the most important in the school. The next thing that they did with the students was, we asked them in, in key areas to think up a magazine or a newspaper headline that they would like to see printed at the end of the Lee Summit High renovation project. And these comments that the kids had and the headlines that they created were, were around creating innovative spaces. One of them was about creating a space where we can be comfortable and relax. They even had some comments about teachers having spaces for their own personal wellness, which we thought was just a, a really nice selfless comment for students. And so the kids are excited for the project, the, the teachers are excited, and our other architects on the elementary school and the middle school designs will be working towards a similar level of engagement with those, those user groups. So, thank you, that's all I can remember.
So we'll move to priority three, talking about communications, competence, trust, and neurocognitive relations and engagement. To Kyle's point, we will be releasing information about the bond proposed project, proposed, proposed project, that's a hard word to say back-to-back. And we have some photos tomorrow of those students and their student leadership teams talking through this project, Lee Summit High School, writing down their tradition, pride, excellence bullet points. So these are pictures tomorrow, they're really fantastic, they're really fantastic shots of the kids, really working hard to move through their work. As you know, we do have our CFMP website and our comprehensive communications plan that we're internally working on with our staff and administrators. All of the downloadable resources are available for our public consumption as well, so they can see engagement, feedback, all of the Phase Two resources that they might want to see. And then the middle school video has also been released on that website as well. One of the things that we're being very intentional about is releasing information about a proposed or anticipated bond through our social media and our communication platforms. One of the things that you hopefully saw is our new redesign of our Our Schools magazine. Katie Bergen is here in the audience, our newest assistant director, she's done a fantastic job with the feature writing and the stories that we're telling through those. The next edition's coming out in about two weeks for November, and there will be a two-page kind of FAQ spread about the proposed projects and that, and information for our community to digest. One of the things, Kinda Segard is here from Patriot Insight tonight to talk about some survey data. One of the things that he might note, but if he doesn't, again, our Our Schools publication is holding strong as one of our most read publications. Seventy-seven percent of our telephone survey respondents say that they get their information about the school district from the Our Schools publication. So again, really great rationale as to why we have that publication and what kind of information we share in that publication. Thought Exchange, one of the tools we've been using this year is Thought Exchange, again, as an intersection from last year, but we have rolled out the ability for our principal team to use Thought Exchange in their schools. So these are some examples of some of the exchanges that our principals have been running. I think Dr. Kephardt has one in here too, just to talk about with their staff or with their parents, some of the things they might like to get some more feedback on. So again, just for examples of some of our principal Thought Exchangees that they have been running over the past couple of months. As Dr. Kephardt alluded to as well, our equity journey continues. You have seen this slide before, but this is the addition of the evaluation data that she was referring to. So we have released the results from the Thought Exchange we did last spring, as well as the training feedback from our first five cohorts that have gone through the Equity Training. So very positive feedback, very valuable feedback that our public has really been engaging with and looking at to make sure that that work continues on pace with what the expectations are. We have an app, district app. This is one of the things that we've launched this fall as well. If you haven't downloaded it, I encourage you to do so. It's been launched for a couple of months. It's easy to go to the App Store or Google Play, put it on your phone, it has great resources for you at the touch of a finger. And then this is our app download data. We've had about thirteen hundred downloads since we launched at the end of July, beginning of August. And again, some of the features that Ms. Bergen has been working on through our schools, it's our first edition, again, second edition coming out here in a couple of weeks, and again, great feedback on the format and the features that we're beginning to tell through this platform. This is where we talk about our data as it relates to news stories for our July through October quarter. You can see the total amount of news stories, positive, neutral, and negative. And then really wanted to highlight our reach and engagement. Again, we continue to really push the limit on our reach and engagement through our social media channels. As just in the next slide, we've done really great work in increasing that reach and engagement. But one of our highest ever posts on the Facebook page for the district is our First Day of School One Voice video. You can see it almost a thousand likes and almost fifty thousand views of that video, so just wanted to highlight, that's one of our most, our highest performing posts we've had probably on our platform of Facebook. And then again, to reiterate, this was a slide you saw last month as well, or last quarter as well, but over the course of a year, we have seen over two-hundred percent growth in our engagement on all of our platforms, as well as a hundred and eighty-eight percent growth engagement per post for each of our platforms. So just really focus on our content, digital content, how we share content, what time of day we share content, what our audience wants to interact with, and being very mindful of what our audiences want to see, and they like it. And then the last slide, I just wanted to make sure that you guys noted, was we did draft a comprehensive communications plan for July, and I think I showed that maybe in a Friday update, but just really encourage us as a district to eventually get to the point where we're approving a comprehensive communications plan on a yearly basis. So as we get to that point, this is kind of some snapshots about the research, the beliefs of the department, and where we go from here. All right. I think that's it from all of us. Questions, comments? Ryan?
Dr. Kephardt, I have a question for you. In your presentation, you mentioned as a part of the Equity Plan Phase One, and I'm going to lump kind of a couple of things in together here. So you gave us a quick update on that, and then we talked about the expansion of the NWEA. Is there, are there other ways for our district to identify those kids who might be eligible and/or capable of participating in the gifted program besides the NWEA test at this particular time? And second, and you can answer these in whatever order you want, and second, along with the Equity Plan kind of Phase One, there's, there's twelve or thirteen timeline goals that we have going right now that are spring of 2019 to fall of 2019. Is there a way that we can provide a goal-by-goal update even in print format so that we know where we're at on expansion and identification of our, of the student, of the student curriculum focus and things like that? Is that something that we could do here?
So I'm, so I'm going to send the, I'm going to send both questions to Dr. Barger. However, in talking about the plan, so the linked plan in there does go through, through each of the action steps and provides an update, but we can do that, and we'll look at a more public forum to be able to do that, and that may be on our website, on the Equity Plan website, so.
And that's what I meant, I meant a public-facing update.
Yes.
Sorry, I should have said that since we have.
That certainly would be a place to be able to do that.
Okay.
And then I'm going to send it to Dr. Barger to be able to answer more of the gifted question.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So certainly we do use NWEA as our initial screen. When we look at what DESI encourages or allows in terms of being a approved program in Missouri, and certain districts opt into that, others choose not to offer gifted services, and we do. When you look at the three criteria that we utilize, there is a fourth criteria, which is the ability to look for other, but the three criteria that we utilize primarily is to have hit a ninety-fifth percentile or higher on a nationally-normed assessment. And so that is one of the criteria, and the nationally-normed assessment that we utilize is NWEA. And we choose that particular assessment over other possibilities for a few reasons. One of the ways we know to have the most equitable access to gifted services is to do a universal screen as opposed to referral-based identification, because it helps to eliminate any potential bias in that referral process. And so because we use a universal screen, we choose to utilize the ninety-fifth percentile on a nationally-normed test. That being said, in order to do that, you have to give whatever test that is to every single child. And the best way to use instructional time, if we're going to give an assessment to every single child, is to ensure that you can get the most bang for your buck, meaning that yes, we get a nationally-normed assessment that will allow us to screen for that ninety-fifth percentile for gifted, but we also get incredibly powerful instructional data for all kids, whether they're going to be anywhere near that ninety-fifth percentile or not. So it's not ever a waste of the student's time to engage in the assessment. So that's why that particular assessment is there. It's important to note though, that it's not just that assessment. After you do that academic screen of the ninety-fifth percentile, students move to the OLSAT, which is a creative reasoning thinking. Students then have to hit the ninety-fifth percentile of that assessment as well for their age, and then at that point, they move to the WISC or the IQ, and then it's paired with some other things in terms of creativity, teacher, classroom observation, and so forth. The other thing I would offer in terms of alternative means, as I mentioned, that there was that fourth criteria that would enable for a gifted screening, that is indeed the looser one, right? The one that is not quite as clear-cut, and is sometimes harder to, to defend why something is a yes or a no. That is the criteria that we utilize for our advocacy process. So when we have students who do not fulfill, or do not get caught, or are not moved forward in our traditional screening process, and that there are adults in the child's life, be it adults at home or adults at school, who continue to believe that they see truly gifted attributes, but for some reason, they feel like that screening process isn't meshing, then that advocacy process exists, which is a, a team that looks more at the whole child set of data and asks the question, what does this child, what other criterias do we see in the student's data or about this child that would differentiate them from other students who have the same data and did not qualify for the program? Did you feel like you got the question on Equity answered in terms of the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All along, yeah, the, the whole thing was is to try to get that out into a public-facing way, so that people know where the progress is.
Where we are and what needs updating, and hopefully, it's the goal that as we meet with some of our building administrators, we can reexamine those timelines and make sure that places where we, where we need to do some work fairly quickly, that we can, can get moving on that.
And I think Jackie has a question.
Thank you, we'll have that for Chris. Just to follow up to Ryan's question regarding the Equity Plan and that public-facing component, to have people understand where the district is on the status. It would seem like probably a pretty simple way of being able to express that would be kind of the old green light, yellow light, red light in terms of where we are on progress toward goals. So I think that would be real helpful to have a one-stop location for folks to be able to see. We're getting a lot of email traffic wanting to have updates and to understand where we are on the plan and not just the training element.
I think a natural place for that would be our page that is dedicated to the Equity work on our webpage, also working through some other venues, social media venues that may be the, allow for some incremental celebration of work along the way as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. All right, we are moving into our presentations and recognition.
Yep, the, the first is going to be introduction of Principal Jody Mallett, right? Mallett? Mallett? Mallett, sorry. Introduce video into Highland Park Elementary students.
Is that better? Oh, okay. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening for just a few minutes to showcase some things at Highland Park. There are many, many wonderful things going on in our building, so it's hard to pick one thing to share, so we wanted to pick something that we felt like was unique. One of the things that, our theme this year is HPE Strong. So as we have talked about that, we have used this book as a catalyst called All Are Welcome Here. So I'm just going to read two pages and then go into kind of what it means to us and to one of my friends over there. "Pencils sharpened in their case, bells are ringing, let's make haste. Schools beginning, there's dreams to chase. All are welcome here. No matter how you start your day, or what you wear when you play, or if you come from far away, all are welcome here." And then our favorite page. "We are part of a community. Our strength is our diversity. A shelter from adversity, all are welcome here." It's got beautiful pictures. So we've really focused on the, the phrase, "Our strength is our diversity." At Highland Park, we house the ELO program. We have seventeen languages among all of our students and staff, because one of those is a staff member. And so we really are celebrating the opportunity to learn from each other and to grow together. And one of the things that we have done every day, we say our mission statement at Highland Park, which is live, learn, and grow as leaders. And so we had our students say the mission statement in their language. So we're going to share that with you, and then we have one of those friends here to talk to you. So we're going to share that with you, and then we have one of those friends here to talk to you. So there will be a quiz. We engaged our parents in that activity. Mrs. Johnson, who you'll hear from in a minute, sent home letters so that parents could help with their kids and students and helping them practice that so when they came to school, they were ready. So we're super proud of our students and our ELL program. And Ms. Johnson's going to introduce a student to you.
Hello, my name's Michelle Johnson. I'm an English language learner teacher at Highland Park. I have my friend here, Maria Haynes, who's also an ELL teacher. And this is Freddie's, and Freddie's is from Honduras. Freddie's came in August, he had a little bit of a delay starting school, but asked every single day, and begged and begged and begged, "I need to go to school today." And so there were some paperwork issues and whatnot, but he was not going to let up. "I need to get to school." And so what he's going to do right now is he's going to share a story that he wrote, basically just letting him know how he feels about school. Okay, listo? He's a little bit nervous. We practiced, and he did really well. Okay, so maybe. We're going to, we're going to read, and he's going to repeat. He did very well earlier. It's okay, I'm just going to have him. So real quickly, I'll just tell you what he said. That he was just very happy on his first day of school, and that his school is very beautiful, and he's happy to learn English. His school is beautiful, beautiful because he has lunch, PE, art, and friends, and a computer. His school gives him beautiful things like math, and he, his father works so that they can have a house and study. And he studies and teaches his father English at night.
Okay, so I know we've gone over because of our sweet friend. But one of the things when, when Ms. Johnson and I talked today, and we went over what, because he wrote what he was going to say. So he did write that in school this week, was that because of our ELL program and because of the support we have from all of you, we're not just changing his life, we're changing his dad's life and his whole family's life. And we're just really grateful for that. And I have the book for you to share. Thank you so much.
What, what grade?
Second grade.
Excellent, thank you.
He's perfect.
Any questions for him or for us?
Muy bueno.
Muy, muy bueno. Señor, please say. Muy bueno. Please.
Express his profound thanks and gratitude for our district, but he wasn't able to work, as you can understand. So he's proud of them and all of our friends.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Our next agenda item is to have Principal Jeff Scalfero and Assistant Principals Melanie Hutchison and Dr. Brett Jacobs are here to highlight Bernard Campbell Middle School's Club and Advisory Program.
I'm just going to go on record that that's a tough act to follow. So we'll do, we'll do our best, but you're probably not going to get the same thing out of, from us. So what we want, what we wanted to talk about tonight and highlight is our advisory program. We truly believe that a strong middle school has, a pillar of a strong middle school is the advisory program. So with that in mind, over the summertime, we looked to retool our advisory program with, with the thought of looking at mentorship, intervention, and choice for the social-emotional wellness part of things. So we did that. And we had some goals in mind as we, as we did that and took some action steps along the way. You can see those. I'm going to have Dr. Jacob speak to, there's an example, we had that set up for the teachers. And one of the pillars of this advisory program that we started with was intervention. So playing off the, the NWEA, EA expansion, we decided to use that assessment, because we were getting assessed in seventh and eighth grade, to use those assessments to determine intervention groups. And currently, we are providing an intervention through I-Ready, which is from Curriculum Associates to over 100, it's about 110, 115 kids in reading and 110, 115 kids in math in our building. So well over 200 students are getting another level of intervention that they weren't getting before. And it's prescribed, and they get 50 minutes a week during advisory. So that was a key component of, of our advisory program. And these kids were not getting intervention like this last year. So that's, that was a big deal for us. And then, of course, we have, we kept our reteaching component in our advisory program. The testing center, this was something that our, we really wanted to provide as a resource for our teachers. We have a, it's basically an assessment center. Kids can do retakes throughout the week during advisory. If they weren't there on a given day for an assessment, teachers can have them sign up for a spot. So we created this resource, and that takes place as well. Social-emotional development, this is just done through, we have, we're using Second Step, which is, was provided to us through Cerner. We're using that as well. And then I'm going to have Dr. Jacobs speak to Case Management. This is the mentorship part of, of our advisory program that we thought, that we think highly of.
Thank you. So as we decided and moved forward with what the key components to our advisory program were going to be, we really kind of took the pillars from what we provide our, our highest need learners, and then tried to apply that across our building. And so when we say Case Management in our building, it's about forming relationships, seeing the whole child when it comes down to their academic progress, their social-emotional needs, and their, their movements inside and outside of class, connecting to them, helping them connect to something in our building. Our program has focused on 100% participation in some activity or club without providing what Ms. Hutchison is going to describe as our club activities prior to this. But now by embedding it into our advisory program, we can ensure that students are connecting to something that they connect with. And then finding that adult, that research says is so important, that each student connects to at least one adult. And now we provide a couple of different opportunities for adults to interact with them academically, review their progress, identify their social-emotional needs, and then look deeper into what their needs are outside of the building by making frequent contacts with their parents. So our goal is for each advisory teacher to make a personal contact with a kid, with a student, one-on-one every three weeks, and with a parent every nine weeks. And by doing that, it, it brings that connection a little bit closer. And then it also gives the other adults in the building a person, a contact person to go to when someone appears to be struggling, or to help celebrate their successes. So it also gives an opportunity for team-building, kids to connect to other students, not just in their advisory, but also in their clubs. They get a chance to connect with other students who have similar interests and make those connections. And I'll let Ms. Hutchison talk about our club program and what we offer that each week.
You still don't have cute kids, you're stuck with me. So, but a little bit about this, this inventory process actually started as giving this to students. So it wasn't us coming up with ideas to shift them and put them into, but it is what do they actually want to do? So that came first was a teacher and student inventory and potential list of clubs to come up with. That was key when we talk about getting kids connected, and it's getting connected at their level. It's not the level we want them to be interested in, but what are they genuinely interested in? So from within that, this was a list of clubs that we were able to offer students. So that means an adult, or two adults in some cases, because there were some very popular clubs, basketball. And what are they wanting? They got to pick a first, second, or third choice. And if students were not able to get a first or second choice because of capacity, Dr. Jacobs called every student in, said, "All right, you didn't get this one or this one, what would you be interested in?" And so it wasn't, once again, what did we feel like they wanted to, might be interested in? It was asking the student, "What is something that you would like to be a part of here?" So you'll see it, a vast variety of things. Everything from online blogging to, we have some amazing ukulele players if you need to come around Friday morning sometime, to a chess club, which is huge, Step and Creative Movement, even a teacher academy. So there is a wide variety of things. So within that, these are just some of the pictures of our kids. We've done this for a few weeks now. You'll also see in our social media, we do a Friday Spotlight where we try to at least do some mini highlights of two of our clubs. The kids love to see themselves on this, they're very excited. So if you ever check out our Instagram, or Facebook, or Twitter, you'll see them, they find themselves. So these are just some snapshots of our ukulele club. What are we at in ukulele club now? We're at 40 kids. And between guitar and ukulele. So we actually have Ms. Holdermeyer, who is one of our music instructors, and one of our social studies teachers, who is very gifted guitar. He is amazing, and without that, he gets more connected to students as well in a different capacity. So it allows students and teachers to make a much different, unique connection. You'll also see our photography and drawing and strategy games. Some of the kids that you've never seen take hold of leadership opportunities. You give them a strategy game, and they are on it. So once again, they have that opportunity to show some leadership. We have some amazing photographers in our building. We have a great group of yoga instructors. We have one of our special education math teachers who's amazing at yoga. So she leads a group of boys and girls in yoga in our commons. That was a unique experience to start off with first, and once they got into it, it's great to watch them. And then this is just another group of our, it was Step and Creative Movement. We're very lucky that it's actually our educational therapist, and one of our reading teachers leads that group. And then you'll see we have, beyond that, in the school day, we have other opportunities. So what has been nice is kids are having conversations about things they might not have known they would be good at, or might not have known that they had a possibility of doing. And that would be, we have a color guard team now, which is new to our building for the second year now. And then also our drum line, who has come out in their second year, and they've played at different events. They're amazing for middle school drum line, come out and check them out. And then also, we've got Sue Reese, who is over at one of the high schools that who teaches tennis, has set up and does, they be on the school day tennis club, and they have done a phenomenal job. So our goal was that not just outside of the school day, but at some point in time, that kids get connected with something that they're passionate about. And so that was that whole piece of being connected in middle school to something. So that was just a few of the snapshots of what our students are able to do on their Friday club time.
In closing, you know, it's had a good, it's had a great impact on the kids, but I think it's had an even greater impact on the adults because they're doing something different, you know, and they're connecting with kids in different ways. And I remember when we used to do clubs prior when I taught and I was in the classroom, and it was, those were moments you connected with kids you generally might not connect with. And you had relationships that, you know, were lasting and meaningful. So we're just, we're happy about what we're doing right now. So if you have any questions?
Mr. Allen?
I just had a quick question. Is this all internal? I mean, staff and students only? Or do you incorporate partners in education or PTAs or?
We'll do anything.
I was just curious, I didn't know if those were too. PTAs I know are always very strong in elementary, but possibly middle school as well.
So our PTSD this year. I have a coach voice, so I tend not to use the microphone, sorry. So our PTSD is actually, they've come in more this year. And so we're actually looking at working with another group and then having a mentoring program going to Underwood next semester. So that is, our next kind of step is branching out of our building. But we're very excited because they've come in and offered their time as well. So that's been a great uptick in getting more adults into our building as well.
Partners in Ed as well?
We're getting there too. We haven't quite, we're, we've got some other groups that would like to come in. So we're kind of, we don't want to over-statimize. But no, it's about getting them in, but then also making it unique and a authentic experience for kids and adults.
One more. It has very good, strong conversations around Equity Plan, inclusion, diversity. That weaving into some of this, or has weaved into this? I mean, there were some good dialogue last year, year and a half. How's that come through?
I just look at it as access and opportunity.
Okay.
That's, yeah, I mean, there's more, our students have more access and opportunity of things they generally might not have. Yeah, I mean, there's more, our students have more access and opportunity of things they generally might not have.
So, and one example of that is our, our color guard, they perform at Lee Summit North, and they really start to connect and build that bridge. So that's one of the first color guard teams in the area, one of the only ones that I know of. And then so they go out and compete also in competitions with Lee Summit North. And so it's really trying to do two things, connect them to our building, but it's also trying to set them up for how they connect to their future school, graduate, and start to become part of a bigger community. Drum line's the same way, they go compete, they go to Friday night and football games and play with the band as well. And so we really try and brand shop that way.
Busy. Awesome.
Kim?
I just wanted to applaud you guys for bringing the club program back. I know that's not easy to get all of that information from your staff members and your kids and not easy to schedule them. I know what you went through. I did it first, helped do that firsthand, along with Dr. Andrews and a bunch of others. But I don't think enough can be said about, this is really part of the whole middle school model, of keeping kids involved, connected, and giving that sense of belonging where they can really discover some things about themselves and learn some of their strengths. And so thank you very much for bringing that back, guys.
We have to give them a hand. All right, Dennis?
Okay, I get to talk about food. One of my favorite subjects. During National School Lunch Week, we recognized our Nutrition Services staff who worked tirelessly to contribute to our students' wellness and the educational development. Whether it's creating a salad bar option, addressing summer food insecurity in our community, or honoring student voice and fostering leadership through nutrition councils and clubs, our amazing, and I really do mean amazing, LSR seven nutrition staff work hard to make sure we take care of each child, both inside and outside the cafeteria. Representing our Nutrition Services Department tonight, I could ask if you would come forward, is Laurie Danella, Director of our Nutrition Services, Lindsay Salazar, Assistant Director of Nutrition Services, Lisa Fierro, Assistant Director of Nutrition Services, and Chris Maven, Coordinator of Nutrition Services.
Okay, 3.04, National School Bus Safety Week. National School Bus Safety Week gives us an opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for all of our transportation staff. We honor our bus drivers, bus aides, shop technicians, and transportation support staff for taking care of each of our students. Our transportation team has received one hundred percent clean inspection reports the past three years and the exemplary school bus maintenance award from the Missouri Highway Patrol for nearly three decades running. LSR seven transportation makes our district proud and gives our community peace of mind. And before I announce the people, I don't think Mr. Henry would mind, if you know anybody who wants to drive a bus, send them our way. If that's, was that okay? You know, hey, let's go, let's go, we need some more people. Representing the Transportation Department tonight are Rudy Rhodes, Chair of the Transportation Site Team and Team Lee Summit representative, and Bobby Nusselrod, Site Team members plus other members of the Department Site Team. Please stand and be recognized.
They also had a great family picnic last week where Keith Henry was flipping burgers and cooking hot dogs. And yeah, I got to go over and spend some time with you guys and that was really a great event. So good job, I'm glad you guys got to have some downtime there. And it's my pleasure to, to talk about 3.05, which is Lights On. On Lights On After School Day, we recognize our Before and After School Services staff. These professionals take care of our students' mornings, evenings, snow days, and summers, because every hour is better with learning. We are grateful for our BASS staff on Appreciation Day and every other day, for all they do for our students and our schools. Don Butler, Director of Before and After School Services, will be representing all of our BASS employees.
All right, great stuff. We will move on to comments from the public and we do have seven people. And Kim will read.
All right, tonight, we appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. I wanted to take a moment to share a few guidelines. Please remember, while this is a meeting held in the public, it's not a public meeting. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting. We want to hear what you have to say and your comments will be noted by the board. And if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. As the parliamentarian, I'm going to exercise my authority to keep comments within a reasonable time limit. Therefore, we will be limiting all comments to no more than three minutes tonight and no more than twenty minutes total pursuant to Board Policy BDDH. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen and only those who have signed up on the comments from the public form prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. We ask that you refrain from using the names of any students or staff in your remarks and remain respectful. Lastly, when your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any. Thank you.
All right, our first speaker is Sean Kirkwood. Okay, let's move on down to Rodrick Sparks, please.
My name is Rodrick Sparks, good evening. Today, the fight will continue for equity in every student in the LSR seven school district. I know some of you are asking the question, "We got rid of Dr. Carpenter, we got him to leave, we got rid of the Assistant Superintendent of Equity, we got her to leave, why won't they just stop?" Well, I have an answer for you, we will not. My children and the families that are here tonight, we are demanding that the school board and educational staff that will be more diverse and look like our students. We are also demanding of the resignation of President Don for not being a true representation of all students and the lack of sensitivity and her offensive words and self ignorance. Until the student, until the current student, student, uh, school board extends the EEC contract to show the commitment and also the continued commitment of equity learning. It's also imperative that the board conducts a diligent and fully transparent superintendent search that will include input and assessments by community members that reflect the many demographics that makes up this district. Also, for every board member that does not fully support and execute the six points equity plan, I'm asking you to resign today. Also, I stop and also please stop wasting our tax dollars in buying out contracts of capable and qualifying individuals with a, just because there are individuals that have a partisan agenda. Lastly, until the leadership of the district is inclusive, transparent, trustworthy, caring, and also have the best outlook for every student to succeed in life, then we are demanding you to step aside and allow this district to go higher. Lastly, I would also like to acknowledge Representative, the late Representative Elijah Cummings. From his first speech on the House floor, this is what he said in that speech. "I only have a minute, sixty seconds in it. Forced upon me, I did not choose it, but I know that I must use it. Give an account if I abuse it, suffer if I lose it. Only a tiny little minute, but eternity is always in it." I have a question to ask you. In your last minute, what are you doing? Are you sure that all welcome are here in this district?
Thank you, Rodrick. Mike McMinnis?
I'm Michael McMinnis, I'm appearing in the district. At the, we're going forward, we're gonna have a bond issue, or we're talking about a bond issue. We have a headwind of the reassessment fiasco in Jackson County that you're gonna have to overcome. And then at the last Business Roundtable, it was reported that they asked for the superintendent search to be slowed down or suspended, and if not, then they would withhold support. That's true, why? Why, I thought the Business Roundtable was a discussion group, not a voting group. We'd like to see an explanation of why they did that, what was the reason for that vote, and what's going to happen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Michael Shaw?
Good evening, Michael Shaw. I represent Miles, my son, who's a student here. Been going here all his life, so all he knows is LSR seven. Well, I mean, a lot of things that I was concerned about have been said. I was concerned about the superintendent search. To ensure, the best thing we can ensure is that there is a transparent, open search for leadership. Our district deserves the best chance for the best success and having an open and transparent search for the best candidate is in our best interest. I was disappointed to hear about the Business Roundtable, lack of the better word, giving the board maybe an ultimatum or short of an ultimatum, suggesting that if we don't keep Dr. Miller in, that they're not gonna support the bond issue. I, I was heartbroken to hear that concept or even that they would even suggest that or even that the board would even placate to something of that sort. But I'm glad to see that there is a search that's going on. So the idea that you placated to it probably was false information, maybe. But being transparent, our children deserve the best that you have to give them. As a parent, I will support my child. I wanna support the district, but just to be open, there's not enough people that look like me to represent me in this organization. That really needs to change. So as you continue to talk about getting diversity, you need diversity of thought and, and understanding. We're just not gonna be a sideshow to suggest or to show, to appease you. That's not fair to us, we're human beings. We have children, we don't wanna embarrass our children so that you can feel good about yourself. Give us the best chance for success, add diversity to this organization. We're not gonna talk about who you let go, it's not relevant at this point, they're gone. But you need to bring back diversity of thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Megan Goss?
My name's Megan Goss and I'm a teacher here in the district. Good evening, board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Megan Goss and I'm a teacher at Lee Summit West High School. Straight out of college, I came to LSR seven. And because of my colleagues at West, my administration, and my district leadership, I, as a teacher, am made in, I'm sorry, made in R seven. I messed up my hashtag. I come to you this evening as an employee of the R seven school district, as a resident of the city, and as a straight cisgendered ally to ask you, board, to make a change to our notice of non-discrimination in the board policies. Thank you to all of those in the leadership at SLC who were involved in the change of venue for this year's convocation activities. It was a strong show of support for our LGBTQ plus staff and students. As a next step, I am here to advocate that you add sexual orientation and gender identity to the district's non-discrimination protected groups to promote inclusion and equity for our LGBTQ plus colleagues, to model support for our LGBTQ plus students, and as a necessary step for the district's journey with equity. Protections for LGBTQ employees, I'm sorry. Several timely events have inspired me to speak to you today. The first being the Supreme Court's recent hearings on the employment practices of businesses for our LGBTQ plus neighbors and friends. Second, the recent inclusion of sexual orientation and gender identity in the non-discrimination practices of the Shawnee Mission School District, joining among school districts such as Blue Valley, Olathe, and DeSoto. Finally, with the new transition in leadership for our equity in the district, I felt it was my obligation to remind you of your duty to uphold commitment to equity work in the district, especially in light of your comments focused on supporting LGBTQ plus students and staff in our journey with equity. Protections for LGBTQ plus employees already exist in districts who are on the front lines of equity work and they recognize the importance of sexual orientation and gender identity in their non-discrimination practices. Adding these protections to our LSR seven policies will speak volumes to our colleagues, students, and community. With the district's renewed commitment to equity, my hope is that the board will take this opportunity to unanimously support the inclusion of sexual orientation and gender in the non-discrimination policy to make our staff and students R seven proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Mary Humphries?
Oh, there's chocolate up here. My name is Mary Humphries, I'm a teacher at Lee Summit West High School. I teach college credit English, English twelve honors, and IB Theory of Knowledge. I also co-lead avid culturally relevant teaching at Lee Summit West and I teach the LSR seven grad class and Visible to Visible, increasing LGBTQ plus equity and inclusivity in the classroom. In addition, I also have two daughters who attend the Lee Summit Schools. I represent them up here, not Lee Summit West High School. I'm here tonight to speak in response to the recent resignation of our Equity Superintendent. This resignation has sparked concern that the current equity plan will now stall yet again, placing the district even further behind on the agreed-upon equity plan. Currently, so few people are receiving said equity training that teachers, quite frankly, are beginning to wonder if and when we'll ever get the training that we desperately need. Simply stated, this equity plan is moving so incredibly slow. It's important to note here, however, that the LSR seven school district has shown its ability to enact swift change, just not with equity. Please take, for example, policies regarding vaping. During the eighteen nineteen school year, the consequence for a student found carrying or storing any tobacco or vape product on school grounds for the first time would be assigned to four-hour detention. Fast forward just one year, the four-hour detention has now been changed to a solid five days of in-school suspension. Again, for the first offense. The swiftness of this policy change indicates to me that speeding up the equity plan is, in fact, possible if you, the Board of Education, decide to make it a priority. As a district, we should be past the point of simply discussing equity issues. It's time for us to see real changes. It's time to make culturally relevant teaching a part of every teacher's knee evaluation. It's time, it's time, Park Hill School District has already done it. It's time to provide job protections for our LGBTQ plus teachers and staff members, like the Shawnee Mission School District has already done. It's time to strategically address the lack of diversity in advanced courses. This is my third year teaching college credit English, I only have one African-American student. It's time to solidify a recruitment and hiring plan that increases diversity among our teaching staff. It's time to implement new curriculum that is inclusive, relevant, and engaging. It's just time. If we can make swift policy changes to curb vaping, surely we can be more swift on our equity work. We have waited far too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Bess Hales?
Hello, my name is Bess Hales.
Hello, my name is Bess Hales, and I am a Lee Summit parent, as well as a Lee Summit teacher. I would like to take this opportunity tonight to ask you to please rethink the way we do hiring in this district. Looking around at my colleagues, I'm very proud of who I work with, however, I'm saddened that we don't have more people of color in certified positions. This is especially sad today, when we have lost two people of color at central office in the last few months. Would it be possible for us to partner with Lincoln University, or other HBCUs, to recruit teachers from their education programs? Lincoln University is an hour and a half away. Would it be possible to leave jobs open for more than a week, so that we can make sure that everybody sees an opportunity to come join us in this district? Can we add questions to the interview process to ensure that our new hires are equity-minded? I'm not an expert by any means, however, I find it very disheartening that we are seen as a premier district in the area, and yet, we can't find a more diverse staff.
Thank you, Bess. All right, thank you all for your comments. We will move down to Board Reports and Meetings Attended. Mike?
I guess the first meeting that I'll report about is one that we were unable to attend, actually, because we're at the Missouri State School Board Association, that is, Government Relations Committee. There is a committee meeting in the morning, seven thirty, bright and early, John Knox Village. So, we, all seven board members, were at the Missouri State School Board Annual Conference for a four-day work session, or sessions. Though, one of the things that I was able to attend, and very much enjoyed, was the Missouri State Teacher of the Year twenty twenty recognition banquet in Jefferson City. That was Monday evening, designed to recognize regional semifinalists and finalist awardees at the state, as the state Teacher of the Year. This year's attendance was over three hundred. The governor attended and spoke to the audience for the first time ever. There were eight of us in attendance to support of Blake, Mr. Blake Little, Lee Summit High School educator, and he was one of seventeen semifinalists. And I do think it's important to note who was there, certainly Chris Little, Blake's wife, Dr. Carrie Harrison, Lee Summit High School principal, Dr. Miller, Dr. Kephart, Julie Donahue, myself. Coincidentally, I was actually able to also attend state Board of Education meeting on the next morning, during the discussion surrounding the Missouri Improvement Program version six point oh. And then, it's interesting, Ryan, because there was, the next item of discussion was solidly for an hour regarding gifted programs, testing, differences in assessment, disparities between urban, suburban, and resources. So, it's a very strong aspect of the gifted, I'm sorry, of the discussion around Missouri School Improvement Program six point oh, so, timely. Thanks.
All right, as Mike said, we were at MSBA, so we didn't get to do government relations, but I will report for LSEF. For Lee Summit Educational Foundation, the Race for the Future was a great success. We had over one thousand three hundred and thirty participants in the 5K, the Kids Dash, and as Dream Partners, and we raised around sixty thousand dollars. School participation winners were first place, Westview Elementary, who received a one thousand dollar grant from the foundation, they had over one hundred participants. Second place, Sunset Valley, received a five hundred dollar grant from the foundation. Third place was Hazel Grove, who received a three hundred dollar grant. Fourth place, Woodland Elementary, who received a two hundred and fifty dollar grant. Do you notice the trend here? They're all elementary schools. We need to get our secondary kids to get out and run in the race, too, I know they'd have a lot of other activities. But if you haven't signed up to support the Friends of the Foundation program, it's not too late, we would welcome and encourage your gift of support for our students and our teachers. Thank you.
Mike, I mean, Ryan.
Close, you know. MSBA for me, and then we had Finance Committee, Dennis and I did yesterday morning, and I'll report on that here in just a second.
I, we've all talked earlier about attending MSBA, and it was a great work session at that time, earlier in the month, or last month. I sat for the first time ever on the business roundtable this past week. The bulk of that meeting was to review and look at the CFMP, and possible phases that could be added, or not added, but taken into account for the possible bond issue coming up. That was on Wednesday, backing up, on Monday, I thought it was Monday, the CAC met, and again, that, that, very, very good meeting, and talking about all the different facets of the possible bond, and the different schools that might be included in that. And a really kind of a neat activity that we took, that the citizens on that committee took part in, to kind of see the pros and cons of some of the different proposals, so, that's where we are.
Great, thank you.
I don't really have anything else to the report, I also was in attendance at the Missouri School Boards Association Conference, and then the CAC meeting earlier this week.
Great, thank you. Jackie?
Like the others, attended MSBA, and had the opportunity to represent the district by making a presentation regarding effective government relations for school districts. It was a lot of fun, we had a lot of great folks, and had some follow-up afterwards. Also, I was able to make a visit over to Hope House. Try to prevent domestic violence, so that was a great opportunity for me to be able to stop by there. Then finally, just, well, I guess I haven't quite returned yet from the Public Relations Society of America's International Conference in San Diego, I'm at a midway stopping point on business, and I was able to attend a really robust discussion of diversity and inclusion, and some work that other organizations are doing. So, eager to be able to share those learnings with my colleagues. And finally, we have all been asked, and I, anyone in listening distance, you can consider yourselves asked as well, and I think if Mr. McMinnis is still in the room, he will appreciate. I am encouraging others to become judges for the Lee Summit West Debate Tournament that will occur next weekend, the first, it was the first and second. So, I'm sure that if he's still there, he can get you signed up. Thank you.
All right, with that, we have Lee Summit Care's Drug Takeback is this Saturday, from ten to two. Kim and I usually are on the same team, but we're competing against each other this time. So, you can go see Kim at John Knox Village, or you can go to see me at Lee Summit Police Department.
Did you say John Knox Village?
No. I'm gonna be at John Knox Village, okay. And, I'm really excited about this, I know that Judy, Kim, and I, and hopefully some of you, the others, can make it to our Youth, State of the Youth kickoff, it is, you're going? Good. It's at Bridge Space, and it's November fourth at eleven o'clock, and lunch is provided, but I'm really excited to hear what the youth have to say about Lee Summit, so, that's always a good thing. We will start off with the Finance Committee report, is it you, Ryan?
It is my turn this month, the most exciting part of the meeting, so. So, the Finance Committee met yesterday morning at seven thirty, and so, kind of the highlights are, we'll do a transfer of three million thirty-two thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents, that's needed from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund to cover expenses for the month. Our investments through September total eighty-seven point three million dollars. Our expense percentages are within our expected budget parameters, and the current fund balance for September is nineteen point six-six percent. We were updated on facilities, the Finance Committee reviewed updates on the following projects, the Woodland Sewer Improvements, middle school track resurfacing, which looks awesome, Westview Roof Improvements, Lee Summit West retaining wall improvements, paving improvements, which Kyle told us were the boringest pictures of the presentation, and we were planning for future projects. Administration is recommending adding an additional service to Benchmark's current professional service contract in the form of a rebid for the Westview Roofing Project, as well as a district-wide roofing repair package. Kyle Gorel presented the Facility Services Program Evaluation to the Committee. And just a few other highlights, from the Mid-America Regional Council's Head Start Program, Dr. Stacy Mathis spoke to the contract for Mark, which is a renewal for early childhood for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. We also reviewed the school bus mileage report, Keith Henry spoke to the Committee regarding the nineteen-twenty mileage report, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five million miles we're driving, that's pretty close, I think. And Transfinder Training Class recommendation is being made to host a Transfinder class, which will hopefully reduce the cost to the district, as well as providing the service to surrounding districts, which that actually will help us in scheduling and routing buses to hopefully make it more efficient, and take some of the burden off of those people who are already doing that job right now, I believe there's two of them right now. To my fellow board members, we have two actions tonight, six point zero two, to approve the transfer of three million thirty-two thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Right, that was a unanimous.
Madam President, six point zero three, I move to approve the Treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, item number seven. Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Move down to number nine. Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I move that the Board approve new contracts over five thousand dollars as presented in consent agenda items nine point oh two through nine point one three.
All right. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Great, thank you. Number ten, items for decision.
So, this is an item for decision that I'll have Mr. Metz and Dr. Delston speak to.
So, we had to update a couple of the salary schedules based on some things that have been happening throughout the year. Last April, we had an audit on our federal food program, and one of the things that was found during the audit was, we were providing meals to our cafeteria supervisors. So, it was an action item, or a finding, depends on how you wanna define it. So, I talked to several of the secondary principals, because these are all on secondary level, and talked to them about how important the positions are, what the, you know, what would happen if we just took away what was the meals being paid for by the district. They thought the positions, they would have trouble filling the positions, so we evaluated what it would cost to actually continue to employ these positions, and so that we just, we changed the stipend to reflect what the salary needs to be in order to support the positions. And then, private swim lessons, I believe is an add, because we've been doing it, and it wasn't on the salary schedule anywhere, and then the aquatics, aerobic instructor, I think went from eighteen to twenty-one, because we were struggling to find instructors for that. So, we just wanted to make sure and update everything, so that way we were paying everybody correctly. Any questions?
Is there any questions? Okay, Ryan, go ahead.
I'll make, I'll make the motion, I move to approve the revision of the hourly salary schedule and stipend salary schedule as presented.
Any discussion, Ryan?
I just had one quick question, do we have any teachers that are within their buildings that are doing cafeteria supervision, almost like as their sec, as a second plan, instead of outside, or other people, or like in elementary schools, where there's other people coming in to do supervision? Are there high school or middle school teachers that are being required to do supervision? I'm assuming that there's some, quite a few.
Mr. Murdock, I'm gonna ask Dr. Andrews to come join us for this conversation. He worked most directly with the secondary principals on this, because it is a critical component and coverage for our secondary schools.
Anybody that gets a stipend to be a lunchroom supervisor is doing so during their duty-free lunch, so it's not part of their assigned. Over the years, there have been a few isolated situations where a student, I mean, a staff member might do three lunch shifts, where two of those would be an assigned duty for a teaching period, really. We have worked to eliminate those, they are very rare. I believe we may have one in the entire district right now, where a staff member does a couple extra lunch shifts, and sometimes that's just the nature of a master schedule that comes in, and we aren't going to give them two plans, we will assign them a duty, and sometimes that would become an extra supervision in the cafeteria. I think there's only one of those, if I'm correct, right now in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Judy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and I sent these earlier in the week, but I didn't get the information back in time for our meeting. I would like to know on this item, what has been spent out of the Nutrition Services budget and the operating budget to pay for this cost in the past? Can somebody answer that?
Yes, I have, I'm sorry I didn't get them to you, Judy, we got them late today. So, seventeen eighteen, it was twenty, twenty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
I'm sorry, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight thousand two ninety-nine, and then eighteen nineteen was twenty-seven thousand five seventy-eight.
And that's total?
That's the total, so the increase in the stipend would be twenty-nine thousand seven eighty-four, plus the benefits, which would be about forty-seven fifty, so it's gonna be about a six thousand dollar increase, roughly.
Okay, well, I guess I calculated that a little bit differently than you did, but here's my concern, the addition of the stipend for the food is six hundred and forty-four dollars, and that's an amount compared to if we were paying what an adult lunch is for a hundred and seventy-one days, which were the student days, is about five hundred and seventy-two dollars. And by paying it as a salary, we're also committing the district to paying retirement and Medicare on that, and I just, and spending more money than we need to, because I think in the past, not every person who was assigned cafeteria supervision duty actually used that benefit of buying lunch. And so, I am not supportive of paying more money than we would need to, to address this particular item.
Any other comments?
Well, I have talked to a few staff members who, or heard, heard from some staff members who have been very disappointed that their, that their lunches are no longer covered as part of their duty, because some of them actually give up their own lunch shifts to supervise lunch, okay? So, they're actually, and I've seen these guys in action before, or ladies, they're, they go around and they supervise, and they have to eat while they walk, because they literally have no lunchtime of their own. So, I understand your concern about, you know, paying it as a salary, but in a way, it's, it's something I think that they've earned, and it is very difficult to get cafeteria supervisors. So, you know, I, I don't see a big issue with that.
Well, just to clarify, I'm not against paying for their lunch, but I do not believe we ought to pay it as a salary. I think we ought to put it in their account, so they could use it just like any other teacher who pays for their meal, they could, you know, it would be pre-funded in their lunch account, and then it would, up to the amount of three dollars and thirty-five cents for a hundred and seventy-one student days, so it's about five hundred and seventy-three dollars. I'm very supportive of that, what I'm not supporting of is paying it a salary, and obligating the district and the employee to paying retirement and Medicare on that additional amount. So, really, the employee comes So really, the employee comes out with less money than they would if we were paying the $3.35 for the number of student days. That's my objection.
Okay, I understand that now, and if we can figure out a good way to do that, I think we should do it.
Do you want to amend the motion?
I think it's a question for, for staff as well here, on what is the best way to move forward with this? If you add it to salary, I get we're paying the extra. If you don't add it, what's, what would even that process look like? How do you, if we're adding it to their lunch account, isn't that adding essentially salary to them? I mean, how do you...
And at that time, it would also be taxable to the employee. So I mean, this is a win-win for the employee, because now it also, like she said, it adds to their retirement. So when they retire, it's an opportunity for them to draw a little bit of a higher retirement amount. I ran this through our auditor to make sure, you know, when I first received this, I was concerned on how we were going to handle it. So I ran it through the auditor, and this was the suggestion that he gave to us.
Right, and, and what I was just, and I think, I hope I made myself clear, is if we put it in their account, it still gets taxed, right?
Right.
Okay. I, I'm not in favor of amending my motion, so if people want to defeat the motion, that's fine, but I'm in favor of the staff recommendation.
Okay, any other comments? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
Thank you. Right. We're on to the personnel report.
All right, good evening again. Human Resources presents the Personnel Report for the Board's approval this evening.
Do you want to have a motion first?
Madam President, I move that Human Rec, uh, we recommend, approve recommendations that the first, uh, the Personnel transaction be approved as presented and contracts issued. I jumbled that one up enough as I went through.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Ryan has a question?
Yeah, I only had one quick question. On the, I noticed obviously that the high turnover that we're having because of the time of year at the Aquatics Center with all the instructors leaving right now, when do we hire back? What's the seasonal timeframe of that, that we do? Does anybody know? I'm sorry, I totally forgot to send that question. I know Quasi's not here, so... My bad, sorry.
And I don't see Quasi.
It's fine, if somebody just wants to shoot, I was just curious, it's not a huge, it's not a huge deal.
All those students.
Yeah, no, we can get details from Quasi prior on that. I'd hate to do it from the hip right now. But we can get that in, as you said, sometimes it's the time of year.
Right, I know it cycles through, and so I was just curious when he goes back to do, yeah.
And then sometimes periodically through the year, we'll do these in groups as folks have cycled off, not been active, especially when you're talking about hourly employees like we have at the Aquatics Center.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the Personnel Report say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Right. All right, now we have a presentation.
Thank you. We're going to have Ken DeSagart come up. He's from Patron Insight, and he's really done some great community survey work, really to give us some top line survey data on really what the community's perception is if we have a proposed bond.
Sure, I got this right? Yes, there we are, there we are. I knew I was here. You might want to get that timer ready again, I'm just saying, because I can talk for a while about research that we've done. We have completed three portions of research. We've completed the statistically reliable telephone survey that I'm going to talk about tonight. We've completed interviews with 15 key opinion leaders in the community and four within the district, and we've completed online surveys for the community, for parents, and for staff members. And I'm going to talk again about just the online, I'm sorry, just the telephone survey tonight. We finished up the report for the online survey and draft form just this afternoon, and the online, or the interviews will be worked on early next week. But what we're talking about tonight is, again, the statistically reliable portion, so kind of bear that in mind. The others is, other parts are information gathering, but this is the one to pay attention to, so I'm glad I had the opportunity to speak to you tonight on this. Oh, I did, okay. I want to talk first about the methodology real quickly. We had 400 completed interviews with male or female registered voters who are heads of household, male or female. It's just a matter of not wanting to talk to an old sounding teenager, wanted to make sure we had the right person. And we know this going in, that these people fit those qualifications, but, because of the list that we purchased of landlines and cell phones. But if they don't know that, or they don't affirm that, then we say, thank you very much, have a good evening. We really want to make sure that the 400 individuals who consent to the interviews are aware that they're a head of household and that they're a registered voter. We divided the number of completed interviews almost equally. You can't do 400, 400 interviews divided by three and get exactly equal, but there were 133 interviews in two high school drawing areas and 134 in the other one. And the results from this survey as of right now, so think about it that way, bond is in April, if it happens, as of right now is plus or minus 4.9% or 5%. So as you look at the results for the entire survey group, remember to add and subtract 5% because that gives you the range as of right now. We start by grading the district's performance, and this is an easy way for folks to kind of get into the survey process. They know they don't really have to know anything special about the district, they don't have to have the inside information, they just have, have an opinion based on either something that they know or that's something that they've heard. Now, "don't know" is an option that we do not provide to people, but if they say, "I really don't know" on a particular matter, we mark it down. We take that information and we convert it into a weighted five point scale using the A, B, C, D, F, simple grades. Everybody knows what that means or has a general idea about what an A is, what a B is. And then we total up those points and we divide it by the number of people who had an opinion, not those that said "don't know," to come up with a single number for each of the factors. Now, you can't get an A when we do this, because that would mean everyone would have to say A, and I've been doing this since 1992, and everyone has never said A. All right, there's, I always say, there's one person out there who will say, "Well, they're doing a great job, but they could always do better." So bear that in mind. What we look for is plus or minus the B of four. How ma, what factors are solidly above a B and which ones are below a B? Now, take that margin of error into account, and a score as low as 3.80 is still a B, statistically speaking. So here were the top scores on the five point scale, and I won't go through and read all the bullet points, but you'll see it's really the core of what schools are all about. It is student safety, it's education, it's buildings, it's teachers. So that's always encouraging and not unexpected for a high performing district to have people say, yeah, the core components of this delivery of the school product, if you will, are very solidly thought of. And an overall grade of five, of 4.10 is very strong. It sort of says, as I say at the bottom, 10 of 15, plus the overall score at a B or higher, even with the five that didn't, they still had an overall grade of 4.10. So they think very highly of the district. And I know you want to know, so here are the factors that scored below a B, and they're all relationship factors, and considering what the district has been dealing with for a while, these are not unexpected grades. And when we are finished with the final report on this component, we will break down by demographic group and by geography, in other words, where the person lives, these scores to find out if there's any particular audience that is more critical or more positive than others, or if it's just pretty much a consistently held opinion. Survey then asked about the move of sixth graders to middle school, and this will be a little bit of a theme you'll see when we get into the projects, that is, that we have a slightly more agree than disagree with that decision. And it was explained in the question, not sold in the question, but explained in the question, what, the reasoning behind it. 43% said, "I agree with the decision." 40% said, "I disagree." 16% said, "I don't care one way or the other," and 1% had no opinion on it. So then we went into the core projects that are being discussed, and the methodology was such that we presented each project in an individual question, no sales language, just an explanation. So, for example, the, the new, the fourth middle school was explained based on where it's going to be, how many students it's going to serve, that kind of a thing. And after each one, the respondents were asked if including that project in a bond issue would make them more likely to vote in favor, more likely to vote against, or would it make no difference in their voting decision if the election were held today? Okay, so again, we try to make sure we're not, it's, it's really a hypothetical at this point. So let's say the election were held today, what do you think you would be thinking about this particular project? So here are the more likely to vote in favor percentages for each of the projects. Obviously, they want students to be safe and secure, with 95%, which is rare, you rarely get anything over about 85%. But you can see that all of the projects have very solid support. The one that's a little bit close is building that fourth middle school. 41% said more likely to vote in favor, and I thought it important to put down the, an asterisk with the more likely to vote against, because it was so close. In the other projects, the number two answer was, "It wouldn't make any difference to me." So, so that's very compelling, I think. You don't really, I jokingly say sometimes that these are results where I don't have to stand by the door when I deliver them, because I don't have to make a fast exit. These are really good results, they really are. Level of support for a potential bond issue. So we say, okay, I'm paraphrasing the question, of course, but, okay, now you've heard the ideas that are being considered. If the election were held today, how do you think you would vote? Now, I always like to ask that without talking dollars and cents first, because that talks, that really speaks to me about the merit that people see in the project ideas overall. They've heard them individually, now overall, share your thoughts about a potential bond issue. And then, because this is a no tax increase proposal, then we hit them with that information, and we say, now that you know that, if the election were today, how would you vote? But because it's still a hypothetical, we talk in terms of strongly favor, favor, oppose, or strongly oppose, not yes or no, because we want people to, you know, understand that they're giving input into the district's decision about this particular bond issue. On the one, before we talk about no tax increase, we make available to the interviewers, if the person says, "Well, that would depend on what it costs," then they mark that down. Depends on what's in the final proposal, they mark that down. Or, "I don't know," they mark that down. So here are the results. As of today, or as of, you know, this month, let's say, combined strongly favor and favor percentages, you can see are good for the proposal and really good for the no tax increase proposal. 58% is within the margin of error if it goes up, but not if it goes down for a bond issue, obviously. So it's clear that the no tax increase component and explaining how that is possible over and over and over again, as simply as you can, is going to be critical. Now, you see that 96%, that's the highest I've ever gotten since 1992, but let's not celebrate right away, okay? This is a hypothetical bond issue right now that we're talking about, and when it becomes a real bond issue, there are always going to be people who are going to pick it apart a little bit at a time. So it's, you are in a great place from a foundation standpoint, and I don't mean the district's foundation, but you're starting from a great place. And it's just a matter of coming to a decision and then repetitively talking about that decision and the benefits it'll bring to students in the district. That's what the data says to me. Finally, we want to know how to reach people with information. So we presented, I believe it was 17 different potential sources of district news. Now, this is not a district, we've worked with some districts where, really, there was one Mabel's Pie Shop, where people gather to talk about schools, okay? You had more, you know, more boilerplate kind of stuff, but friends and neighbors with five exceptions since 1992 has been number one. So that's, that always says to me that community members talk about the schools a lot. Really good to see our schools at 77%. That suggests that there is a level of trust and that the quality of the product is so good. And I always say, print journalism is not dead when I see a number like that, because you're reaching people that don't have a reason to know about the schools, probably, with that number. Teachers, that's very good, and I would, I would preach to you, the board and administration, it's clear how important your words are, either in person or in the media, because they are looked to as being a resource. School building marquees, if you can get the type a little smaller and put more information in there, that probably would be a good idea. And school principals in the district. So we look at 40% or higher as being key components to think about as you think about communicating. The remainder, and know the report cover won't be pink, you hired us to research, not to do really nice PowerPoints, okay? Strengths and areas needing improvement in the district, that's an open ended question that we have gotten data for now, and so we'll code that, looking for common words and phrases and ideas, so we see what's at the top of that list, both in areas of strength and areas needing improvement. If someone says, "I can't support even a no tax increase bond issue," we ask them why. I will tell you, in the telephone survey, only 13 people were asked that question because of the 96% there. Cross tabulations of key data, as I mentioned, online survey results. Yours truly worked on that this afternoon. I want to tell you, we had 900 parents participate, we had 446 community members participate, and that really speaks to the community. That may not sound like a big number to you, but if they took the time to go on the website and find the link and click on the link, that says they're interested in sharing their opinions. And then 448 staff members. So I know you have a lot more parents and a lot more staff members than that, but from my perspective and my experience, those are, those are good numbers to expect. And the results themselves mirror the telephone survey. And in ca, in the case of the projects and the support at the end, when we ask them how they would vote if the election were held today, exact same questions, they were higher. So you have some people who are critical in the, in the grading questions, but when it all comes down to it, they like the ideas and they seem to be willing to support that. So thank, thank you for not having determined on a timer, but I, I would welcome your questions now.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ken? Mike?
A couple of things. When there was favorable results for a Lee Smith High School, or a Mason, or Prairie View, were those questions targeted to their specific geographic area?
No, no. It was, all, all projects were asked to everybody.
Okay, so some people may or may not know Mason, but there was a little bit of a description in there, is that...
Exactly why, yes. And, and I will tell you, that's part of the cross tabulations. So we will be able to see within the drawing areas where the differences may be, and I'm sure there will be some difference.
Sure. This last, I don't know if it's the last question, but number 34, it says, "Choices were rotated." So friends and neighbor score at 92, saying, where do you get your information? Friends and neighbor, 92. So did you ask every, every one of these line items, and then I'd say yes or a no? So that's how they go, 92, down to parent, teacher, PTA, and 10%. So all of those 10, 10 things were asked.
Everybody was asked everything on that list, and the rotation just allowed it to not be in the same order all the time.
Right down then, okay.
No, no order biases allowed in our company, so...
All right, one last thing, then. Final report, question number 33, why would you oppose, or whatever, the 13 people? When does that happen? When is the final report expected?
We're working, we're working on that now. The open ended's are a massive amount of data, and so we need to, rather than give you a report that's this thick, we're going to boil it down. So for example, if someone says on the strengths, my, my usual example is, on the strengths, if someone says, "They have great teachers," and if someone says, "I like their teachers," that's two teachers, so that you really get a sense of the, you know, what are the commonly held opinions. And there will be some verbatims in there that are outliers or one offs. And there will be some verbatims in there that are outliers or one-offs that don't, don't fit into the chart.
Okay. Well, you know, school board members hear a lot from community members. I had a few, not many actually, talk about the calls that they received, but that they were very professional, positive, efficient. So, you know, kudos to you and thank you for, for moving those through. Because folks, I know, anticipate a call thinking it's going to last forever and it's, but very positive feedback.
Well, that's great.
From folks that I heard from.
I will, I will refer that on to the people who do our calling and have since 92 because that's usually what we hear. That's almost always what we hear.
This audience wasn't born in 92, but that's good.
I know. I know. But I was born a lot earlier than that. I'm just telling you. So.
Jackie has a question.
Oh, thank you very much. Ken, I'm sorry I'm not there to see you in person.
Me too.
I promise I'll be gentle with my questions. I'm eager to understand what breakdown you're going to present to us on the geography and the demographic aspect of the survey. You might guess, I've been engaged with dozens of these over the years.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm just kind of curious what additional information we're going to see that's different from the top line, which is age and gender.
I look at the, Jackie, I look at the cross-tabulations as being kind of the icing on the cake as you're thinking about the bond issue, but more as you're thinking about how to communicate about the bond issue. It will identify the audiences where additional communication or additional focus will be necessary. So to answer your question, we are going to provide information based on the high school drawing area for, and this will be for the lower-graded areas for each project, probably except the 95% one, because we don't need to cut that hair very finely. And then the support level, and as suggested by the CAC, some of the top information sources too. So you'll get that by, by high school drawing area, by age, by length of time living in the district, and by what I call, and gender, and student status. So that would be, do you have a current student in the district? Do you have a student, are all your students graduated? Or have you never had a student in the district? So we'll really be able to take a look at it from a kind of a 360-degree perspective on the key questions in the survey. And, oh, and also the, the sixth grade question too, because that was so close.
Right. Okay. Let me, let me be a little more specific. You are, you've been there probably all evening and you've heard the ongoing discussions regarding equity in the district. Could you explain to me the choice to include or exclude the racial and ethnic profile of the voter in, in our district?
Yes. We had conversations about that. And in my view, that would create some opportunities for, some unnecessary opportunities for headlines as you looked at the data. I think you're going to be making a decision based on kind of the merits of the proposal and the, all the voters that are going to be voting. And we don't usually do racial, ethnic, and we also don't usually do income levels because that tends to stimulate calls to the district saying, "Why do you want to know this information?" And our focus really is on trying to parse it based on region, by age, to see if, for example, you know, we have a pattern that we expect with age groups. And we have a pattern we expect with student status groups. So we want to see if the pattern holds true this time around for the district. For example, student status groups tend to be, as you would expect, current student households, the most supportive. Past student households, the second most supportive, but they're pretty close usually to never student households. And that's the suggestion that, "I've been there, I paid that, I don't want to pay anymore." And so we're looking for those patterns and to see what's different so that you can make effective decisions about how to communicate that. But we have found that those other two categories just tend to stimulate challenges for the district. And why do you want to know that? So, I know, it's, it's a, it's a decision for every survey. And the decision this time was just not to do that.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Dave Travels.
Any other comments for Ken?
I have just one quick question because of the way that the middle school question came out so close, obviously. In reading the actual question, was that the full question that they were asked, number 22, on that?
Yes.
Because the rationale for building a, another middle school, I felt like with that particular question, the rationale for doing that may not have been the top-line reason why we were even asking to move the sixth graders to middle school as a result of overpopulation of our elementary schools. And I'm just wondering if the public understands that that's a secondary benefit of moving the sixth graders as opposed to the enrichment clubs, activities, opportunities, social, emotional well-being, all that stuff that moving them is going to allow. They didn't get that in the question. And I'm wondering how big of an impact that might have had.
When they step in the voting booth, they're going to be focused on, "Is this going to cost me anything?" And so we try to keep it, all, all the stuff that you mentioned is an outstanding, are outstanding benefits of doing this. But if we put too much of that in the question, then we're selling. And this is the part where we're trying to find out, you know, schools get, "How much of my attention every day? If I'm not a parent, probably not much." So on the surface, if you're looking at the project itself, and the introduction did talk about the thinking, the introduction to the moving sixth graders question, did talk about the thinking behind it. And so I think that what I read that to be is, "Oh, boy, here comes a cost." That of all the projects we talked about, that felt like a tough cost. Yeah. And so the idea was, and you'll notice that those first two were not rotated because I wanted to make sure that they weren't misunderstood, that, that the fourth middle school had its own question. And then, and by the way, the other three are going to get some work too. And then we rotated the rest of them because that's, that's seemingly in the public's mind, the biggest dollar item, is the fourth middle school. So I think when they got to the question about, "How would you, would you support what you've heard about?", we did okay at 58%. Not great, but okay when we look at the margin of error. But then when we said, "This is no tax increase," and we did really okay. So they were reacting to the project at the front end. We don't put dollar figures on it because people don't know what things cost in terms of building a school. And so you get people's differing opinions on that. And then at the end, we said, "Here's the, here's the situation. Now would you support it?" So, yeah, it's always a tough thing to kind of parse what we should say to make sure we have enough information out there and what we can't say because it's just too much selling.
Yeah. Just, Ryan, this is Board Member Murdock. This just gives us a good pulse for where the community is without doing any kind of education or advocacy. So it's actually encouraging data, considering, you know, 15, 17 years ago when we had this committee was a resounding no. Now we're on the upside, the positive. So it's encouraging.
Kim?
Yes. I just wanted to say that, Ken, you did a great job at CAC meeting.
Oh, thank you.
As well as this evening. And our CAC group, it was the first time I've ever been to a CAC meeting, and I was, just came as an observer this week. But I was really impressed with the discussion that they had and the questions that they had for you. And particularly, I think they had a really good discussion on how to, some ways to explain the no-tax bond, like you said. So they were giving examples of, of good ways to explain to our public how that works and why we need to do that. And so also, and the suggestions, I think the CAC is, is taking, gathering all this information and doing what they're supposed to do, which is to make some recommendations to us too. And that's after you provide also the rest of the information. Is that correct?
Yes. And that'll be next week.
Okay.
Again, we're all done with the draft of the online. We're into the one-on-one interviews. And by the way, you will get quotes from those interviews, but they will not be attributed because we did promised confidentiality.
Very good.
And then telephone survey, it's just the, it's just the needles in the haystack that I love looking for.
Very good.
That's left.
I know you really love this stuff, don't you, Ken?
Yeah, kind of. Sorry. I told you you needed to get that timer ready, so. I've been to more CAC meetings than you then, and I recognized the older gentleman who was sitting up front, who's been on the CAC forever. Because I walked in and I thought, "These will all be new people." Not the case, so.
We did also talk about the middle school. And I just did offer at that meeting that, you know, our middle school study team had a really good, comprehensive report that really does list all of those great reasons why sixth graders need to be in the middle school. And so I suggested that we do a condensed talking points list for that so that we can help explain those things. So, thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
All right. Dennis?
Okay. Thank you.
Too many buttons here. Thank, thank you so much. Ken gave this information at our CAC meeting the other night, very, very well, I thought very well-received. I was not the older man sitting at the front that, that he's seen a lot of. One thing I thought was really kind of cool and, and made me to, as we progressed through, Wes did an excellent job of, because, you know, Missouri School Finance is one, really one easy puppy to, to deal with. Saying that sarcastically. But Wes kind of took us through Capitol Campaign 101. And what a no-tax increase. It's very good, and if you don't do some of these sometimes, it's not so good. You don't do it just because you don't need to do it. But again, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Wes for kind of enlightening this. And I probably wouldn't hurt sometime down the road for, for us to be enlightened a little bit some more on, on that very, so when we're out in the community talking about this, that we could talk intelligently about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ken? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
For your presentation. We had two written reports. Does anyone have any questions or comments on those? Kim Pritchey?
Facilities gave us a report this time, and that was a great, comprehensive report, Facilities Department. I think we need to publicize this information to show the public what they're getting for their tax dollars because that, that was really an excellent report. I think it would be really cool if we could actually put it on our, do it, attach it to our website and say, "Hey, look, this is all about our district facilities," and I, you know, and see if, so people could see what's going on. I took a tour of the Facilities Department last fall, and this report really though, it really shows the scope of the services provided by our facilities, workers from building custodians all the way to Mr. Kyle Gorrell out here. And one thing I really loved seeing in that report was, you know, if you like to read the picture books, the picture reports are really cool too because you get to see, they had some great pictures of all, the photos of all the finished projects that have been completed in our schools this past year. And so I would just like to say, "Thank you, Facilities, for your hard work. We really do appreciate it. We have some of the best-looking schools around." Thank you.
Judy?
I was just going to say ditto to that. Thank you very much for everybody in your department. Please express our appreciation to them.
Any other comments on the written reports? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh, I just adjourned. All right. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate your support.